Call to order the Monday, March 24th, Raymore City Council meeting. Ms. Warner, would you please call roll to confirm a quorum?
Councilmember Abdelgawad.
Here.
Councilmember Boehner.
Present.
Councilmember Hubach.
Present.
Councilmember Kellogg.
Present.
Councilmember Morehead.
Present.
Councilmember Pifo.
Present.
Councilmember Stevens.
Present.
Councilmember Westco.
Present.
Mayor Kirkoff.
Present. We do have a quorum. Would everybody please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance?
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which we stand as one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
There are no presentations or awards tonight, no personal appearances, so we'll move right on to staff reports. Mr. Berlin?
Thanks, sir. I'll call on the city clerk, Jeanne Warner.
Thank you. Amended copies of the March 17th special meeting minutes have been distributed to you tonight at the Diaz. The amendment is in number one call to order to reflect that three council members did call for the special meeting. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jeanne. I'll call on the public works director, Mike Crass.
Thank you, Mr. Berlin. Members of the council and mayor, I don't have too much to report. You have our, my written report. I am available for questions with that. We do have a couple of bid openings scheduled for early April. The 58 Highway culvert repair, that is a culvert that's about a half mile west, east of J Highway. It's in disrepair and fairly deteriorated. We've had some settlements over it, so that will be opening in early April, along with the roadside trail maintenance project. Both of those are scheduled for bid openings in early April.
Questions of staff? Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. I have just a few items. First of all, I would like to publicly congratulate Jeanne Warner on her selection as president-elect of the Missouri City Clerks Association. So Jeanne is not president this year, but she is, will be president a year from now. Congratulations to her. We just note that we did have a meeting last Wednesday. A group of members of the city council, a number of you were there, along with a number of members of the park board, met with the consultants for SFS Architecture and ETC Institute that are designing the community survey for what's, it's now agreed we will call the Civic Center. Consensus was reached on most of the questions that will be in that survey. There are a couple of questions that need to be reworked. Everybody agreed. And so the consultant will be getting back to us with some proposed reworkings of those questions. And then we'll be in touch about scheduling another meeting to hopefully finalize that survey instrument. We just note that the city will be hosting here in this room. We're not, we're just, it will be located here. It's the Chamber of Commerce's candidate forum, but that will be here in the city council chambers this coming Wednesday, March 26th, at 7:00 PM. Candidates for the city council will be first and will take questions that were provided by two of the local newspapers, The Journal and the North Cass Herald. Then there'll be a break and some refreshments outside in the lobby. And then the six school board candidates then will, will then take questions next. Again, that's 7:00 PM on Wednesday. And then just noting that since next Monday is the fifth Monday of the month, March 31st, there's no work session currently scheduled next Monday. That's all I have, sir. Thank you.
Any questions of staff? Councilmember Kellogg?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Berlin, you classified the community center as what's being now called a civic center. Is there any substantive differences between the scope of the idealism that's going on? Is it just a change in terms or is there, has there been some changes as far as the reach or the concept of what's been discussed? I've taken some calls from two constituents on this and I want to ask that question.
No, sir. That wasn't my understanding. Other members of the council who were there could speak to it if they liked. But my understanding was it was just, it seemed to be the term that everybody felt was the appropriate term for what we seem to be talking about, although exactly what might be built in the future still hasn't been determined. But no, it doesn't reflect any other change other than just a decision to call it that.
Other questions of staff? Councilmember Westco?
I actually suggested changing it to the civic center because, you know, if you mentioned community center or rec center, everybody always, you know, envisions, you know, the high blue wellness. So because we don't have a specific vision for what we want to do, that's why I suggested changing it to the civic center. That way it kind of pulls that presupposition out of people's minds when they're actually going through the survey.
Councilmember Morehead?
My remark was going to be consistent with that, so.
Other questions of staff? Thank you. Move on to committee reports, and I'll do the first one. Golden Corral had their ribbon cutting last Thursday, and that was a very well-attended ribbon cutting. If you have a chance to go over there and check it out, they have a nice facility over there. I'll get a report from the roundabout welcoming feature committee, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Pleased to give this report tonight. We met last Monday night, March 17th, at 6:00 PM. We met for about 45 minutes before the work session. And I presented a three-dimensional conceptual model of the ideas that came about during the discussions over the last two months, two, two and a half months, and very well received. Mr. Westco was there. He chaired the meeting. Ms. Abdelgawad was there. She put in her input like always, and I was there. It was, and also I'd like to thank Mr. Crass for being there that night. He did show up and gave us some input and added a lot to the discussion. I'm pleased to say that Mr. Westco has requested that this item be put on for a future work session, which will be coming up April 7th after the joint session that we will have with the park board. So we will be coming to the council with the three-dimensional model, concept of what the ideas are in that, and very pleased that this is moving forward and look forward to those discussions on April 7th.
Great. Thank you. Thank you. That takes care of the committee reports. We'll move on to the consent agenda. Entertained a motion to dispose of the consent agenda.
Mr. Mayor, we approve the consent agenda to include item A, city council minutes from March 10th, 2014, and item B, city council special meeting minutes from March 17th, 2014.
Second.
There is a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. Is there any discussion? All in favor? And the motion is unanimously adopted. Move on to unfinished business, second reading. We have the second reading of Bill 2942 by title only.
The second reading of Bill 2942 by title only. In ordinance of the city of Raymore, Missouri, amending the zoning map from A Agricultural District to C3 Regional Commercial District and amending the zoning map from A Agricultural District to BP Business Park District, land located in Section 19, 20, 29, and 30, Township 46 North, Range 32 West, Raymore, Cass County, Missouri.
Thank you. We have a motion to dispose of the second reading.
Mr. Mayor, I approve Bill 2942, the rezoning of North Cass Plaza at the Good Ranch.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to approve the second reading of Bill 2942. Is there any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries unanimously. We have the second reading of Bill 2943 by title only.
The second reading of Bill 2943 by title only. In ordinance of the city of Raymore, Missouri, approving and authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract extension agreement with Town and Country Disposal to provide single hauler solid waste, recycling, and yard waste pickup services and special pickups.
Entertain a motion to dispose of the second reading of Bill 2943.
Mr. Mayor, I approve Bill 2943, the extension of contract with Town and Country Disposal.
Second.
So a motion and a second to approve the second reading of Bill 2943. Is there any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries unanimously. And that takes care of old business. Move on to new business. The first one is Resolution 1418. The first, the reading of Resolution 1418, please.
The reading of Resolution 1418 by title only. A resolution of the city of Raymore, Missouri, approving the preliminary plat of North Cass Plaza subdivision located in Section 19, 20, 29, and 30, Township 46 North, Range 32 West, Raymore, Cass County, Missouri.
Thank you. This requires a public hearing, so I'll open up the public hearing by asking the applicant to come forward, state the name and address for the record, and present their proposal.
Good evening. I'm Pete Offerman, Offerman Land Design. I'm the... Good evening. I'm Pete Offerman, Offerman Land Design. I'm the land planner and landscape architect for the project before you tonight. I was starting to say the, actually the entire Good Ranch. What we have before you tonight is a preliminary plat for 34 and a half acres of C3, which some various commercial pad sites, and then 113 and a half acres of a business park. And if I can, I'd like to go get the easel and boards. I use a plank. I have a plank. Basically, with the commercial site, what we've got is three hotels right here on three different sites up close to the highway. And the reason we have that is I've found that working with hotel developers over the last several years that hotels like to be right next to each other. They think that they draw on each other for business because, you know, people will get off the highway and if they don't like one hotel, well, there's another one right next door they can go to if they don't like the price or whatever. So anyway, that's why that's shown like that. Site four, here is a fast food restaurant. Next door to that, we've got a bank, another sit-down restaurant, the fast food restaurant, another bank, and then a convenience store situation, and then some retail shops at the very east end of the center. That all entails about 34 and a half acres. Then we also have considerable open space within it. We have a tract right here, a big one here, and then one down here and one for the detention. And these tracts are essentially because we're trying to save the creek and not destroy the creek and save some of the trees. It's also, this tract is here not only for the creek, but for when it's determined that a trail might be needed to get people like from the interchange area down into the shopping center without having to walk all the way around or something. It's, you know, to be determined whether that's needed, but if so, there's a track there for it. We also are doing the 114 acres, more or less, to the south here, all along the highway. And I don't really have a picture of that other than what's in your packets and what's leaning against the wall over there, that big purple area. We don't, haven't done a site plan for that simply because, you know, we don't know who's going to want to come in and do what there. And as far as that's concerned, it's entirely possible that the first user that comes along here will have their own building, so the site plan might end up a little bit different depending on, you know, what they want to do. So anyway, you always got to work with them because they're the ones with the money. But then obviously, you know, that would all get approved through the city on the final development plan process. And also here with me tonight is Gib Good, one of the owners of the Good Ranch. Should you have any questions for him about anything? And, you know, as far as a brief presentation, that's the basic nuts and bolts of what we're trying to do is to get something going down there at the interchange. And I'd like to answer any questions if I could.
Thank you. Questions of the applicant? Councilmember Westco?
I realize that this is just a preliminary plat, but has there been interest expressed in your current design and the way it's laid out? Is that the reason why it's been laid out that way?
Well, the reason for us doing a layout is because there was interest. They haven't necessarily expressed an interest because of this layout. It was kind of the other way around. But I understand that there has been interest from one of the major convenience store people and possibly hotel also.
Other questions of the applicant? Thank you.
All right. Thanks.
Move on to staff report then.
Thanks, sir. I'll call on the community development director, Jim Catterett.
Thank you. Mr. Offerman gave a good overview of the project. A little bit additional information I'd like to share out of the staff report for your consideration this evening. Again, you know, the location as indicated at the Good Ranch. This preliminary plat is on the south side of the North Cass Parkway to the east of Interstate 49. And the extension of Dean Avenue would cross through the commercial part of the subdivision. It would then form the eastern boundary of the business park area of the subdivision. I included, excuse me, some aerial photographs to give you a visual of the property, the staff report. Adjacent zoning to this project to the north on the north side of North Cass Parkway, all that land area is zoned C3, which is our regional commercial district. And then the land area that would be to the east of the proposed zoned areas is still currently zoned agricultural. I want to note that this particular preliminary plat does advance three of our goal statements in our growth management plan that was adopted in 2013 by the Planning and Zoning Commission. So we feel that's a very good note regarding this preliminary plat that we can look towards the partial meeting of the, some of the action steps of those three goal statements. A preliminary plat does require a public hearing, which we advertised for this evening. I do need to enter into the record the notices that were mailed to the adjoining property owners, the notice of publication in The Journal, the Unified Development Code, the application that was submitted, the growth management plan, and the staff report submitted to you this evening. Want to note that in conjunction with the rezoning of this land, the Good Neighbor Meeting did discuss the preliminary plat. So we had a number of interested parties at that Good Neighbor Meeting. The applicant property owner was there. Mr. Offerman was there to explain the preliminary plat, and we answered questions that evening for those that were in attendance. Under staff comments, a few items. I do want to note that this particular preliminary plat is located within the territorial area of Water District Number 10 with the agreement that we do have in place with Water District 10. The non-residential part of the development in this particular preliminary plat can be served by the city of Raymore. We do have water facilities along Dean Avenue at North Cass Parkway to serve this development. So we are in concurrence with the agreement and our ability to serve all the development within the preliminary plat. Mr. Offerman did identify some land uses for the particular lots, and I just make a note, of course, those are, you know, for conceptual illustration purpose only. The preliminary plat, what it's approving is the location of the roadways, both Dean Avenue extended and what would be a future extension of Foxridge Drive, as well as a private roadway that they have planned within the subdivision and a lot layout. That's in essence what we are approving as part of this preliminary plat, not a specific use. As I mentioned, the plat does include the required right-of-way for Dean Avenue south of North Cass Parkway. It also contains the proposed extension of Foxridge Drive. Currently, Foxridge Drive does end in the Wood Creek subdivision of the Good Ranch. It is intended to cross over the creek and would be part of the Meadowwood Third subdivision, a future phase of Meadowwood or the next phase of Meadowwood. And that's where it'd make its connection to Dean Avenue. The developer then proposes to continue Foxridge Drive west of Dean Avenue, where it would then turn south to connect to the North Cass Parkway. So that's, that's the actual intersection you see at a midpoint between the interstate and Dean Avenue is where Foxridge Drive intersection would connect. I do want to note that this particular intersection of Foxridge Drive and North Cass Parkway isn't a segment of the Parkway that is under the jurisdiction of Bodot, so they control the design of that particular intersection. And currently, there is approved what's known as a three-quarter access there, basically meaning that left-turn movements from North Cass Parkway onto Foxridge Drive for either northbound or southbound Foxridge would be allowed. They would be controlled by a median that would be constructed in North Cass Parkway. The purpose of the median is, again, to allow the left-turn movements on the Parkway, but not to allow left-turn movements from Foxridge onto North Cass Parkway. So what they, what Bodot is indicating with that current approval is that the left-turn movements would have to occur over on Dean Avenue intersection. I want to note also that there's an additional access points onto the North Cass Parkway being proposed as part of this preliminary plat. Our, the accident management guidelines of the transportation plan do dictate where access points occur on arterial roadways. They are restricted to one-quarter mile spacing. And so this did impact the preliminary plat when it was initially submitted to the city. The initial preliminary plat showed a full access between Lot 9 and 10, which is well within the quarter-mile spacing that we would allow. Its staff's initial indication was that that access just simply is not allowed there at all. And the developer didn't want to pursue having a, some type of access, perhaps a right-in, right-out at that particular location. They felt it was important to some prospective individuals that were looking at property there that they needed to have that right-in access there. Staff's comment back to the applicant was the fact that the right-in, right-out restrictions, the use of pork chops, just have not worked within the city. It's not something that staff could support. That if there were to be any type of access there, there would have to be some type of inhibitor, some type of median in North Cass Parkway that would restrict left-turn movements out of that particular drive location. The segment of North Cass Parkway to the east of Dean Avenue is within the jurisdiction of the city. So that's why we had, we had some discussions and control over where the access would be located there. Anything between Dean Avenue and the interstate, again, is Bodot-controlled where we don't have any jurisdiction. Since we had jurisdiction, we indicated that if a median could be placed there, and the median would have to be approved by city council as part of this preliminary plat process, that we would then support the right-in, right-out access there. Without the median, we don't feel that we, as staff, could recommend to the planning commission when they do site plan approval that there be any access allowed there. An additional access is proposed, however, further to the east. The very eastern part of Lot 10 does show a full access. Staff, in looking at this particular access, felt it was far enough away from Dean Avenue to allow the full turn movement there. There would need to be some striping modifications to Cass Parkway, that particular location. And right now, as you know, that, that particular segment of North Cass Parkway is three lanes. So there is a center lane there that could be modified to allow the left-turn movements into that driveway, which would actually be a private driveway location, but it'd provide access to Lot 10 and Lot 9. And I mentioned the private drive. This particular subdivision does include a private driveway, which would be, if you would, on the rear side of the lots that are along North Cass Parkway. So in essence, acts as a frontage road. Since none of the lots will have access directly to North Cass Parkway or to Dean Avenue, the private drive is what provides the access to Dean Avenue and Foxridge Drive. Private drives are allowed by the city, but they do have to be approved by the city council. And again, the resolution, the way it's set up this evening would, if you approve the resolution, you're approving the private drive. We note that the code does require that a business owners association be formed in order to provide for the future maintenance of the private drive. The resolution also would approve the use of the median along North Cass Parkway. Again, so that's, that has been built into your resolution submitted to you this evening. The planning commission, when they held their public hearing on this, did submit proposed findings of fact to your consideration. And it was at that March 4th meeting that they did vote 8-0 to submit this preliminary plat to the council with a recommendation of approval, subject to seven conditions. Those seven conditions outlined within your staff report. The memorandum from the engineering division regarding the provision of facilities to this property is included, as well as the minutes from that planning and zoning commission meeting. And that concludes staff comments at this time.
Thank you. Questions of staff? Councilmember Westco and then Stevens?
How far down does Foxridge actually attach to Dean? If we're coming from Lucy Webb, how far down Dean Avenue does the new Foxridge Road run?
Probably, I would, don't know if I'd say the midpoint, but it's still quite a way south of where Meadowwood currently stops, the southern entrance to Meadowwood. There's still a, there's another phase of Meadowwood that would go within that location when you reach, before you reach Foxridge.
So it's going to be right across the street from where it ends now? I mean, it's just going to be right across Dean? So it's not going to jog? It's just going to be...
There'd be no jog.
Okay.
It would continue directly, if you would, directly due west from where it ends right now in Wood Creek. And there currently is a stub turnout where that roadway would be. You could actually see it if you went out there. And it's one of the turnouts that have been built into Dean Avenue.
So it won't impact our intersection at Dean and Lucy Webb?
Oh, no. No.
Councilmember Stevens?
When this is start, when the development's finished or somewhere in that vicinity, is there going to be some kind of, sort of a traffic control device at Dean and North Cass? Seems like there'd be a lot of traffic in there. We'd need something to get in and out with.
Yeah. There, there is a traffic signal that would be forecast for the intersection of Dean Avenue and North Cass Parkway in the future. Not directly as part of this particular preliminary plat. The traffic counts for this particular preliminary plat would not indicate meeting the threshold for the signal there. But certainly when you get closer to full buildout of the commercial area within the entire subdivision, there would be a trigger for a traffic signal. We have indicated as one of the conditions in here that the property owners would need to participate in some fashion with that traffic signal, whether it be directly, they install it or through financial incentive, that'd be, that'd be completed. But we want to make sure it's in the record before lots start to get sold. Right now, the developers, before this evening, own all four quarters of this particular intersection. And so we certainly need to have them involved in the planning for and construction of a signal when that time comes. But it definitely is planned.
Other questions of staff? Councilmember Westco?
How far is the intersection of Foxridge and North Cass from the entrance to I-49?
From the, the measurement that I took was from the northbound, the northbound lanes of the interstate. So from that off-ramp where the signal is, if you measure from that point to the center line of Foxridge Drive, it's roughly 1,075 feet.
Okay.
So it's less than a quarter mile.
And you did say that the intersection's going to be a right-in, right-out?
That particular intersection of Foxridge Drive is right-in, right-out off of Foxridge onto North Cass Parkway. But if you're on North Cass Parkway, you can't make a left turn either to go southbound into this preliminary plat or northbound into the future commercial area north of North Cass Parkway.
So anyone using the hotel will have to catch Foxridge, go down to Dean and the intersection at... Because they won't be, they'll either be able to make a right onto North Cass or come down to Dean and catch the light and to make their left.
Yes, that's correct. Yeah, they would have to find their way back to Dean Avenue, go up to the intersection, and then make the left. Yes.
Okay.
Other questions? Councilmember Kellogg?
Thank you. With what Mr. Westco just spoke about, would that mean that North Cass Parkway would then be a no-U turn there? If you were going east, you, would we have that a no-U turn so you couldn't go back west?
Are you talking no-U turn at Dean Avenue?
Yes.
Yes, it would be no-U turn at Dean Avenue.
Thank you.
Other questions of staff? I'll open the floor for public comment. Please identify yourself for the record and keep your comments to under five minutes. Seeing nobody come forward, I will close the public hearing. And I'll entertain a motion to dispose of Resolution 1418.
Mr. Mayor, I approve Resolution 1418, the preliminary plat for North Cass Plaza.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve the reading of Resolution 1418. Is there any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries unanimously. Move on to Bill 2944. We have a reading of Bill 2944 by title only. We have a reading of Bill 2944 by title only.
The first reading of Bill 2944 by title only. Adornance of the City of Raymore, Missouri, approving the final plat for High Point at Creekmore, second plat, lots 21 through 44 and track C and D, a subdivision in section eight, township 46 north, range 32 west in Raymore, Cass County, Missouri.
Thank you. I'll ask the applicant to come forward and state their name and address for the record and present their proposal. There's an applicant here. Nope. Okay, then in that case, I'll ask for a staff report.
Thank you, sir. I'll call Mr. Catterett.
Thank you. Bill 2944 is a request from Cooper Land Development for the final plat approval of High Point at Creekmore, their second final plat. This particular phase is located at the northern end of Creekmore Pond Lane, just directly south of 163rd Street and, and east of North Foxridge Drive. This particular final plat has 24 single family lots proposed. It also includes 30% of the overall plat area is included as common, common area, common property. There is some flood plain in the track D common property, but no portion of that flood plain extends upon any planted lot. I note that the public infrastructure plans for the project have been approved and there actually has been some site grading. So if you drive by, you would actually see some site grading has commenced, which is allowed when a subdivision has preliminary plat approval. They can start site grading before final plat. And I note that the development agreement for this phase has been signed and it was included in your packet. The planning commission did submit findings of fact on their review of the final plat. That was done at their March 18th meeting when they did vote seven zero to accept those findings and forward this case to council with a recommendation of approval. That concludes, concludes staff report.
Thank you. Questions of staff? Thank you. I'll entertain a motion to dispose of Bill 2944.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve Bill 2944, the final plat for High Point at Creekmore, second plat.
Second.
A motion is second to approve the first reading of Bill 2944. Is there any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries unanimously. Move on to Bill 2949. We have the reading of Bill 2949 by title only.
The first reading of Bill 2949 by title only. Adornance of the City of Raymore, Missouri, approving the master development agreement for the estates and estate villas of the Good Ranch, a subdivision in part of the northeast quarter of section 29 and part of the north half of section 28, township 46 north, range 32 west in Raymore, Cass County, Missouri.
Thank you. I'll ask for the applicant to come forward and state their name and address for the record and present their proposal.
Good evening, excuse me. Good evening. My name's Robert Jackson. I'm president of Great Plains Developments, the developer of estates of the Good Ranch. A number of years ago, we obtained a preliminary plat approval and zoning approval for this subdivision, which has not yet been developed due to economic conditions, quite frankly. It is our intention and desire to be able to develop the estates in accordance with provisions of the preliminary plat. And I think it's fair to say that it was intent, it is the intent of the city and city staff to make sure that we do just that and protect the integrity of the storm water runoff and quality. And as a result of discussions with city staff, it was determined that it would be appropriate under the circumstances to execute at this time a master development agreement covering the entire 136 acres involved in the estates and estate villas of the Good Ranch, as also supplemented by an apparent storm water drainage jismant across additional 12 acres that would make, make sure that the storm water runoff was in accordance with the requirements of the current regulations and rules pertaining to the storm water quality. And it was also the desire of the city staff that we make sure that the phasing of this development is such that certain amenities are placed into the subdivision with respect to drainage at the time the first final plat is filed. As a result of all of this background, a master development agreement was negotiated with the city staff and approved by the city attorney. I assume the city staff and perhaps Mr. Willer would have something to mention on that. But in any event, we feel that this master development agreement protects the rights of the developer and the city at the same time and ensures that there is certainty with respect to how this project will be developed in the future. I can tell you, we hope very, very much that this development is able to go forward as promptly as possible. And we certainly appreciate the efforts of Good Otis in jumpstarting the commercial portion of the Good Ranch, because we think that will have a very favorable impact upon the ability on our part to be able to start this residential component to the Good Ranch. I'll be happy to answer any questions, which any of you might have.
Thank you. Questions of the applicant? Now, Councilmember Stevens?
Just a quick one. Do you have any idea when you're going to actually start developing?
I wish I did. I would say, in all candor, a certain factor in that development will be how successful the commercial portion of the Good Ranch development is, the preliminary plat of which you approved this evening. There is no question in my mind, but there is interest on the part of one or more hotel developers for that site. There really isn't quality hotel development in the city of Raymore. The intersection there of North Cass Parkway and Interstate 45 is absolutely ripe for that type of development. If there can be some commercial development started there, I think that it will very favorably impact upon the ability to draw traffic to the area. Traffic produces demand for residential. I wish I could give you a more specific answer, sir.
Other questions of the applicant? Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Lynn, a staff report?
Thank you, sir. I'll call Mr. Catterett.
Thank you. Bill 2949 would approve the Good Ranch, the estates, the estate villas of the Good Ranch, the master development agreement. And what I'd like to do is kind of briefly go through on the staff report here, how we got to this master development agreement. So I think you kind of understand the steps we took to get to this point. Looking back, when the reclassification of zoning occurred for this property, it was approved back in 2006. The planning commission, the city council, as part of that rezoning request, did place a condition that certain amenities had to be included within this, within the subdivision. And they were asking for the planned overlay district. So as part of that specific zoning, they, they did have to provide certain amenities. And those amenities had to be included in the preliminary plat, which was accomplished with the approval of the plat in 2007. The subdivision amenities, again, they, they provide benefits to the future residents of the subdivision as well as the environment. You know, certainly contributes to a establishment of a higher quality development overall. Some of the amenities that they are providing go directly to the purpose of the agreement. So I want to just briefly mention those. The amenities include the completion of certain stream restoration efforts to improve the quality of the riparian habitat, construction of some cascading pools in an existing stream along the east line of the subdivision, retaining an existing pond that's in the, on the property for detention basin purposes. They, we're going to provide an easement to allow storm water runoff from the subdivision to, to circulate through another pond that's on the Good Ranch development property, as well as some certain trail improvements and providing a demarcation between what would be privately held property and the city parkland. So we make it clear where that boundary line is, so we can preserve the parkland and its natural habitat. We don't have private property owners encroaching upon that area. So these are some of the amenities that were, again, required be part of the subdivision and a condition of preliminary plat approval. It was the belief of staff that it's, the provision of these amenities in the whole really do directly benefit the riparian corridor that's on this particular property. There is a fairly significant stream that crosses through the very southeast quarter of this subdivision. And we felt that the actions that the developer took back in 2006 to provide these amenities directly go to the purpose and intent of our stream buffer ordinance that we currently have in place. Then in, in February, when the planning commission first held a public hearing regarding some proposed amendments to the stream buffer ordinance, one of the amendments would actually eliminate an exemption that this subdivision currently has through the MOU that's approved for the entire Good Ranch development. The current, the, in February, the proposed change would have eliminated the exemption for a property that had only an MOU approval. So with that particular part of the ordinance being proposed, there was concern raised at the meeting by, by the applicant as well as others concerning the elimination of that exemption. We had subsequent meeting with the applicant regarding that and, and trying to look at how we could move forward. Staff certainly was aware of the items that the developer had already agreed to do. So we felt this was one particular preliminary plat that actually was meeting the intent of the stream buffer, even before we had the stream buffer in place. So we wanted to find a way to try to acknowledge that, to, to indicate and respect the approval that's already been given and try to incorporate that into our, into our UDC. So a modification that we will be proposing to the commission when it comes back for a public hearing in April is in the exemption section that, a modification that we will propose the language, provide an exemption for a property that's covered with an MOU with a development agreement that does contain provisions for post-development water quality mitigation and best management practices. We select that wording, and not specifically just for the subdivision, but there are, there are a couple of subdivisions in the city that have a similar circumstance where they, they really have a preliminary plat in place that already meets the requirements of our stream buffer, the intent of our stream buffer. So we felt if we could take that preliminary plat to the next level and actually have a development agreement in place that binds that property, not only the current owner, but a future successor owner, that doesn't expire, but it binds the approval that we have in place, so that the city is assured that these improvements would be completed. We feel that provides a protection to the city, but it also provides that, that protection to the developer and that, you know, they want assurances before, you know, as they move forward. We certainly heard that at the February public hearing, when this stream buffer ordinance comes before you at some point in time in the future, you're going to hear that consistently that, you know, the city wants assurances, but the developer needs the assurances as well. And, and it really was the feeling of the staff and the applicants that we were dealing with in this particular instance, that a development agreement was the proper method to move forward. So again, we're proposing that particular requirement as part of the 19th amendment that will go forward to the planning commission in April. This specific bill would approve the master development agreement, and as I mentioned, is binding on not only the current owner, but any successor owners. I do want to note that if council approves the development agreement, that it does stand alone. It, it is enforceable by itself. It's an effect by itself. It's not dependent upon what we decide to do as a city with the UDC, with the 19th amendment and with the stream buffer. Because if for some reason the planning commission doesn't want to include that specific exemption language that we're going to recommend, or if the 19th amendment isn't approved at all, the agreement's still in place and is still binding upon the, upon the developer and the city. But I do want to note as part of that, and one of the items in the development agreement, because the, the applicant understands that as well, you know, he's, he's committing to do this development agreement with the hope that the UDC 19th amendment moves forward as we are proposing it. If that doesn't occur, that his only reliance for exemption is on the preliminary plat that he currently has in place, which as of right now has a expiration date in February that's coming up. So as part of this agreement, he has requested a two-year extension to the preliminary plat. So that, this bill has language incorporated in it that would provide a two-year extension to the preliminary plat that he has on file. Staff is recommending the approval of bill with that language. Again, we feel that he, with his preliminary plat, with the amenities he is providing, that he has met the intent of the stream buffer ordinance. So we feel we are comfortable in extending that plat out for two additional years, because we know that, you know, as he's indicated, this development will not be occurring within the next year. He will be back in February to ask for an extension. And again, as you know, our viewpoint of it is that if he meets the intent of the stream buffer, and none of the other UDC changes would impact this particular subdivision, like what we talked about at your last meeting regarding Arbor Hill, where we had a, another new code that affected that subdivision. We don't have that in this example. So we feel that he meets all the requirements of our UDC and thus support the extension of the preliminary plat. So again, staff does recommend approval of Bill 2949 as presented to you this evening.
Thank you. Questions of staff? Councilmember Wesco?
There's some language in here that, that causing a little heartburn for me. If we go to seven, page 172 in our packet, it talks about stream buffers required by this section do not apply to land or development, which is on land covered by approved, unexpired, yada, yada. But you keep saying that they meet the intent. You know, when I read, "stream buffers required by this section do not apply," well, if it doesn't apply, then it, intent is irrelevant. Well, are we offering an exception because they, they have tried to meet the intent of what our current stream buffer is, so that, you know, they're honoring the spirit of it? Or does our stream buffer just not apply at all?
With, with the exemption, the very specific of every detail of the stream buffer ordinance would not apply because they would be exempt. What we are trying to say with, with this particular development agreement is, we believe this preliminary plat does comply. If he turned in this preliminary plat and got his necessary approvals, if, if he needed to go, go through the court to get that, it would meet the requirements of the stream buffer. That is why we're saying at this point in time, we don't feel it's necessary for him to have to go through the entire process of submitting a new preliminary plat, of making it subject to all the provisions of the stream buffer, because we feel it does meet the stream buffer requirements.
So it's not that the stream buffer doesn't apply to it, because it does. It's just we're offering an exception because we feel that they've met the elements of it. The, the language is what I'm having a challenge with, because if we read it just purely based on the language, then that means that, you know, as long as they have the preliminary plat, that it, it's totally, the stream buffers are relevant to them and none of it applies. Well, if we're offering an exception because they've met the intent, I mean, it, to, to me, it might be semantics, but, you know, if we're going to put this, you know, in the contract, you know, I, I just, where it says "does not apply" or "do not apply," you know, I just, I don't like that language.
Other questions of staff? Mr. Willer, do you have comments to make?
I thought Mr. Catterett did an excellent job of presenting it, and I hope I don't muck it up here in the next few moments. I don't believe the agreement per se is saying it does not apply. That was a comment in the staff comments on page 172. But your, your question's well founded, and staff worked extensively on this agreement. And Mr. Crass should probably speak to those features of this plat that are incorporated in this agreement that we're getting, which is contractually committed to. And that's the difference between this and just having a preliminary plat out there. This is a master development agreement. Mr. Jackson's entity has contractually agreed to provide these things. So when the plat comes up for renewal, he can't move to change them or get out of those requirements. He's contractually committed to them. Only if we modified them contractually could he modify any of the requirements that are made for this. What Mr. Crass has assured me and Mr. Catterett in looking this at depth, is that if this came in now, today, it's meeting even our new ordinance. The ordinance that's going to come before you is going to be modified from the first presentation you had, and that we're going to look at to see, send the applicants to see if they comply with the Clean Water Act, section 404. And only if it's not within the jurisdiction of the federal thing, will it fall back into our requirements, which may be more extensive than they are now. I think it was the developer's fear of the unknown or how that would be applied that led them to want to have a master development agreement that had had certainty with respect to how it would be applied to their subdivision in the future. So that's what they wanted, and to get that certainty from us in this agreement, Mr. Crass went through with me at depth and went through, including these cascading pools and the wall between the subdivision and, and other features that make it comply with the stream setback. So I'm glossing at it in generality, but this was a well-thought-out development agreement as opposed to the as opposed to the more informal memorandums of understanding that we were dealing with coming forward, and we hope to have excellent master development agreements like this. If you want to not be meeting with the requirements as you come forward, you're going to have to show the staff that you have met them already. Hope that didn't confuse everyone.
Councilmember Wesco?
So is this agreement now going to take the place of the MOU?
In my opinion, yes, and with respect to the aspects it's dealing with.
Other questions of staff? I want to entertain a motion to dispose of the first reading of bill 2949.
Mr. Mayor, I approve bill 2949, the master development agreement for the estates of the Good Ranch.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the first reading of bill 2949. Is there any discussion? Councilmember Hubok?
One of the things that I didn't see was that how many homes are going to be built in here, and I don't see anything about the park department and any kind of open space for that. Am I missing something on this? I see where there's reference to a rail fence, but I don't see anything in here that specifically delineates it as being park ground outside of what are called a retention pound.
Mr. Catterett?
I don't remember the exact number of lots, but I can indicate that there is parkland dedication as part of this subdivision. Some of the improvements that the park board accepted as part of this preliminary plat did include the trail segment that would go through the property, as well as the split rail fence that they wanted specifically to demarcate private property from the public park property. So there are public improvements, there is parkland dedication as part of the subdivision, and it has gone through the park board for their review and approval.
Are there any other discussion? Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the first reading of bill 2949. All in favor? One, two, three, keep your hands up, please. Four, five, six, seven, opposed? Okay, abstain? No reason for abstention? The first reading of bill 2949 is approved.
Mr. Mayor, to supplement the response to Ms. Hubok, the current plat would call for 343 lots, and there's about 10 acre of parkland in that southeast corner.
Thank you, Mr. Willer. We will move on to Hubok Hill Road annexation, which requires a public hearing. So I'll open up the public hearing by asking for a staff report.
Thank you, sir. I'll call Mr. Catterett.
Thank you. Back at your January 6 work session, council did express a desire for the city staff to begin the process of exploring annexation of those areas of Hubok Hill Road that are currently shared with Cass County. And in the map that was included within your packet, it identified two segments. Segment one has historically been maintained by the city, and this is a segment that extends between the South Winnis State subdivision and Prairie Lane. Again, we're dealing with only the south side of Hubok Hill Road. And the segment two that we're interested in annexing would be the segment between Tiffany Manor subdivision and the eastern city boundary of Raymore. A previous request where the city has looked at annexing right-of-way of county roadways, the Cass County Commission has expressed the desire that the city follow the procedure that mode utilizes for annexation of state right-of-ways. And so we are following that procedure, and the first step in that process was done at your February 24 meeting where you did approve Resolution 14-13, which expressed the city's interest in annexing these two segments of roadway. What that triggered was notification to all the adjacent property owners on the south side of Hubok Hill roadway of a public hearing that the city would hold. It also invited any of those individuals to provide comments, either verbally or in writing, to the city prior to this evening's public hearing. At the conclusion of the hearing, there's no action that the council needs to take. What city staff would do is simply collect any comments that we've received and report that to the Cass County Commission at one of their meetings, at which time we will officially request the commission submit a petition for voluntary annexation of these two road segments. We would then turn around and come back to the city council with another public hearing that, again, we would advertise and notify those adjacent property owners of the actual hearing, or the council to adopt an ordinance to annex those two road segments. I have not heard from any of the adjacent property owners regarding this particular request, but again, we notified a total of 11 adjacent owners of the hearing tonight. So, thank you.
Thank you. Questions of staff? Councilmember Hubok?
The question that I would have is, we're going to annex that road, are we going to bring it up to the same standards as the rest of the city? When I go out that way, I notice that part of the way is curbed and gutted, and part of the way it's not. So I'm assuming that the part that's not curbed and gutted is what we're wanting to annex. So are we going to make then that all continuous thing as a curb and gutter? Or have you, I don't see anything in there that said what it means when we're going to annex, what we're going to do with it, outside of applying police protection and maintenance.
We don't have any immediate plans. It would be up to the council on a year-to-year basis as to whether to make any improvements on the road, but that is not assumed as part of this annexation.
Other questions of staff? Okay, I'll open, mostly, did I open the public hearing? Okay, thank you. At this time, I'll ask anybody in the public that would like to speak, please identify yourself for the record and keep your comments under five minutes. Seeing nobody come forward, I'll close the public hearing. And that's all the actions required on this item, right? Thank you. All righty, we'll move on then to the first reading of bill 2946 by title only.
The first reading of bill 2946 by title only, an ordinance of the city of Raymore, Missouri, authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement with Terry Snelling Construction for the fiscal year 2014 curb replacement project, city project number 14-192-201, in the amount of $291,709.35, and authorizing the city manager to approve change orders within established budget constraints.
And thank you. A staff report, please.
Thank you, sir. I'll call Mr. Crass.
Thank you, Mr. Berlin, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. In January of this year, the council approved a 10-year curb replacement program. Based on that approval, staff then prepared plans and specifications for the fiscal year 2014 project. Bids were received for this project on February 27. The results of the bids are summarized in bill 2946. We do recommend approval of the contract with Terry Snelling Construction. Terry Snelling has done work for the city before. We also did our typical reference check with other public entities, and there were no issues expressed with work that they have done for those entities, and we recommend approval of the contract.
Thank you. Questions of staff? Councilmember Wesco?
When we have experience working with a contractor, do we keep some type of scorecard handy so that when they bid on future projects, we still have access to that scorecard so that we could see what the quality of their work was, you know, even five and 10 years later down the road?
We don't have a formal process, no.
Other questions of staff? Thank you. I want to entertain a motion to dispose of the first reading of bill 2946.
Mr. Mayor, a move that we approve, bill 2946, the award of contract for the 2014 curb program.
Second.
A motion and a second to approve the first reading of bill 2946. Is there any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries unanimously. Move on to the first reading of bill 2947 by title only.
The first reading of bill 2947 by title only, an ordinance of the city of Raymore, Missouri, approving and authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract agreement with Google to provide the Google for Apps business software platform to the city for a not-to-exceed first year price of $10,450.
Thank you. Staff report?
Thank you, sir. The Assistant City Manager, Jim Fearborn, and the Information Technology Manager, Jim Mayberry, had the lead on this project, so I will call on Mr. Fearborn at this point.
Thank you, sir. And I'll kind of give the summary overview of staff's recommendation, and then if you have any technical questions that appear that I can't handle, which won't take much. Mr. Mayberry is here, and behind me is Mr. Tony Sheets, and he's representing both Google and OMZU, their certified installer and trainer for the region. The city currently uses Microsoft Exchange 2007 for its email system in conjunction with Microsoft Office Suite 2003 for its document spreadsheet and PowerPoint applications. The software is very shortly, as of April 1st, for the Office Suite, no longer going to be supported by Microsoft. Specifically, that means that the software questions that we might have going to them, and more importantly, any security updates will no longer exist. And from an organizational standpoint, that's critical. The, all providers are moving to cloud-based systems as we move forward for their email and business application software. Cloud-based systems do allow users much greater flexibility in accessing their email and documents, as this information is accessible using any computer or mobile device that the user is logged into. Specifically, cloud-based systems are internet-based systems. If you're doing a document or doing your email, it's going through the internet, so anything that, any device that can access the internet allows you access to those documents in your email. Because the city's current software is no longer being supported, city staff last year began investigating cloud-based options to replace our aging software. Two platforms emerged as being both leaders in providing these applications, Microsoft 365 and Google Apps for Business. Staff conducted a nearly year-long review of both applications and their offerings and determined that Google offers the best platform at the lowest price for the city of Raymore. Staff does recommend award of contract to provide the city with cloud-based services and its email and application platform using Google Apps for Business at a not-to-exceed price of $10,450 for the first year. As with any subscription-type software the city has, this price is subject to future year adjustments. The cost of this product and the not-to-exceed price for installation that is the subject of bill 2948, the next agenda item, is $16,050 within the budgeted amount total of $16,597. Couple of notes. First, cloud-based is, in fact, the direction that all of these types of applications are going to. When you go with an application that is cloud-based, you're subject to, unlike a simple purchase price to get the software, it's more of a subscription on a year-to-year basis because you're actually storing things on Google or Microsoft servers. You're using their applications on a year-to-year basis, which is why it's a first-year price, but it is a subscription. Second item is, just want to note that this is an internal application. Externally, no one would see any difference. The email system that, the email addresses that they would see things coming from internally would still be raymore.com. If council members are using an external email source, that one would still be perfectly valid, we'd be able to interchange. If we were sending documents to an outside source, they would still receive them as Word documents, we would send them in that manner. All those things are allowable within this system. Again, staff does recommend Google Apps for Business. And would entertain any questions?
Questions? Councilmember Wesco?
Does our current hardware infrastructure support the cloud-based services?
Yes, it does.
And will our current system run parallel while this other system is up and running that will allow seamless migration before we go 100% to the cloud service?
The plan is to, the IT department will move over first and run a dual system to test everything while it's, while they're implementing the rest of it. Once, once we get, we've got another group that will go after that, of a group of around 10 people, we'll run dual systems also during the conversion. And then after the training, then we'll move over the rest of the city after that. But yes, during this, during this cutover, we'll be running dual systems the whole time.
And do all the programs that the city uses, do they, do they mesh well with Google Apps?
Yeah, the Word, Microsoft Word, PowerPoint, Excel, they all convert over to the same thing as what Google Docs has. The only, the only software that doesn't is Microsoft Access, which we don't use very frequently here. We have a couple of users that will use it. We'll probably keep Office on a couple of the machines because of that software.
If I may, one more. Are there any proprietary programs that each one of the individual offices use? Is the entire city going online, or is it just certain aspects that are going into the, into the, what, the cloud-based system? I mean, you know, I don't know if planning and zoning, or if, you know, if codes, if they use a specific program that, you know, if it's all going into the cloud environment, or is it going to stay on each individual person's computer?
At this time, the proprietary software will stay at the local level. The only thing it'll move right now is the business apps aspect of it.
And if I, if I could dovetail onto that, the primary software that we have that we would be talking about in that case is InCode, which most of our departments use. InCode can be exported just as easily into, say, from the finance office, just as easily into Google spreadsheet as it can into Excel.
Other questions for staff? Councilmember Hubok?
I'm concerned about, I know very little, I'm almost what you would say, an illiterate computer user. But there's several things about it. I understand about the storage, and I understand about the ease and all the different things and what people are going to. But still, I don't like the idea of turning over all of our things to a third party. And I definitely don't like the fact that I read about it, that it is prone to outages, and that there can be serious dysfunction, even with the best ones, and that the security can be very much of a problem with the cloud use. And then they quote what happened with NSA and AT&amp;T and Verizon when 10 million telephone calls were there. And I just don't see that I want to get involved in something like that if we have some other options, if what we're using is all right right now, or if we can go with something else. But they say it is also prone to attack where hackers can get in and threats and stealth. And, you know, there's, we're told that there's nothing on our computers or in the internet that is really secure, and the idea that we might be open to any kind of hackers just really bothers me. I would like to see us do a little bit more study on it before we commit ourselves. Can we have a work session of some kind that we can discuss it? For this is the only contract that I know of that we've never had competitive bids on. And is there, or at least we haven't received them. So is there a reason for that? I know there's Amazon, and there's Microsoft, and IBM, and different ones that are using that system, but we don't know how much they're going to cost, we don't know how to, I don't know how to compare apples to apples.
If I may, sir.
Please.
And then I may turn over some of your questions to Tony to address the prone to hacking, et cetera. The, the two systems that we did compare are the industry leaders moving forward in cloud-based, which is going to be the only option that is available to us as internal systems are no longer supported by the software companies. When we did, we did actually compare pricing for the application itself only, in other words, the user licenses and the storage capacity. The total from Google was $10,450, and the total from Microsoft was $13,597, which is why we report them as the lowest best in this case.
Thank you. And if I want to take a point of privilege to ask a question, I'm on the other extreme of the technology from Councilmember Hubok, but my question is very, very similar to her question, and it's a two-part. One is redundancy. If we lose connectivity in the internet, are we basically shut down here? And the second is the security of the data, both from the data stored in the cloud and the loss of the cloud. Would we have the data backed up here?
Hi, I'm Tony Sheets, I'm with Company OMZU. We're based in Mission, Kansas, we're a Google Premier partner, been doing this since 2006 for Google, and happy to answer any of these questions. I'll start off with kind of the security piece. The product we're talking about is Google Apps for Government. It's a government-certified FISMA, Federal Information Security Management Act product. It was the first to reach FISMA certification, which means that it's been certified by our government to meet certain parameters. It's only stored within the US continental borders. It means that your data is in six data centers. It means that your data is in six data centers at any given time, so it's in multiple locations. To kind of put that in, in reference, currently, the data for the city of Raymore is in a server back in the server room. Should there be a fire? Should there be a flood? Should there be a tornado? That information is gone unless it's on a backup, and that backup is somewhere other than here. In the Google system, it's in multiple data centers at the same time. So if South Carolina were to go offline, you'd still be up and running because your data is also in California. It's also in Pryor, Oklahoma, and it's also in Iowa. If we lose internet connection, which was your question, Mayor, yes, the data is still there. We still have access to it. We only need a internet connection. I guess that'd be an "an" internet connection, as opposed to your connection. If you lose your connection right now through a backhoe accident, or something along those lines, or Windstream, I believe is your provider, were to go down, you have no internet connectivity. You have no access to your email data. With Google Apps, all you need is a connection. So if you have a connection on your mobile device, or through a Verizon hotspot, or your home connection is still up, then you are still up and rolling. So it's a lot more redundant, and it's used by lots of government organizations. The state of Wyoming recently moved to Google Apps, as did the state of Colorado. The city of Los Angeles has moved to Google Apps, and currently, we're helping the city of Overland Park to move to Google Apps.
Answer my question. Questions? Councilmember Morehead?
This might be a little technicality, but in the second, the last sentence on Section 1.1 reads in part, "Or any other country in which Google or its agents maintain facilities." So it's actually not just the United States, correct?
No, it, on the Google Apps for Government, it is only in the US.
In our packet, I believe, do we have the Google, the terms and conditions for the, a different program than Google Apps for Business?
Maybe for the business edition instead of the, for the government edition?
So we don't have government?
Yes.
Okay.
I may have provided incorrectly for that. There are two different products that we're talking about here. There is a government edition and then a business edition.
And I would follow up, because I read in the packet that it, under the agreement, it was for, for government. That's why I was kind of confused on the different.
And we will make sure that at the second reading, the government edition is placed in.
Well, and, and my research on that was the terms and conditions for the, for government was much more extensive towards security as well, so.
Other questions? Councilmember Huber?
You talk about government. That was something that I wanted to know a little bit more about. When I went on, on the internet to look up the different words and what cloud meant and all the different things like that, and they gave me the list of the 15 top, I guess, software companies on it, and some were, that did strictly automotive, and some did strictly health and everything. I didn't find any of them that said that they worked for the government. Now, you're saying something that Google has, but I didn't see any company that mentioned that they specialized in working with governments. Is there any way that we can hook into something that the state of Missouri is doing because we're a part of the state, or would we even want to? You know, where you, Cass County could all be together on one, but I don't really know what I'm saying, except that, and so many other things, we bond together with other political entities. Is this something that we could bond together with another political entity, of the state or the federal government, or, or, or what? Do those of you who do this kind of thing, can you tell me?
Mr. Fearborn?
What I can say is, in addition to the groups that, that Mr. Sheets has mentioned, Columbia has gone to this, again, Overland Park is with it, Pleasant Hill, I know you've initiated meetings with here locally, the school district, Raymore Peccia School District is using it, St. Louis is using it, Boston is using it. Many entities are doing this, but they contract individually for it.
Other questions? Councilmember Stevens?
I just want to, to talk to Mrs. Huber's question. I, while it works for the federal government, I know they use cloud computing, and they're very well pleased with it. But my question to you is about security. Isn't your security probably greater than what you could get from retail?
Yes, actually, on the point of security, Google employs several thousand full-time security engineers that are, their, their position and job is to make sure that it's secure. Beyond kind of those, those computer scientists that are working to make sure the data is secure, it's also under guard, under federal guard. In several locations inside the US, the data centers themselves have physical security that would exceed what you would find in, in most organizations.
Councilmember Kellon?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm curious, because I'm, I'm confused. Who would own our data? Would we still keep ownership of our data, or we, would we be handing that over to the third party? And then another question that goes on to that, who else would be able to view our data? You know, I've, I've got some real concerns as far as security in that. And I know there's some wonderful applications out there and, and companies that do some really good work, but it, when we're talking about citizens' data, I, I get real nervous about that, and, and I do have some apprehensions. But if you can answer those questions for me?
Yeah, absolutely. The, the first question, who owns the data? You own the data. You are the data owner, and Google is the service provider. They provide the service to store your data and then give it back to you as you request it. They also provide what is known as the API, which is an application program, API, a way to push and pull your data in and out of Google. There's a tool called Google Takeout, which is provided by Google, and this is ways that you can take your data in and out of the Google system as you desire, because it is your data. Some other data providers are a lot more difficult to get your data back out of a system. We, we migrate off of various systems, and Google is one of the easiest ones to take your data back out of or push your data into because of the programming application that they have, the API. Your second question, as regards to who has access to that data. You have to provide your username and your password to gain access to your data. Even the administrator of the account without a, a secondary program, which is determined for Vault, it's called Google Vault, and this is a e-discovery, a compliance tool for legal to be able to do discovery across all mailboxes. Without Google Vault, there is no way for any individual to gain access to another individual's data without their username and password.
Other questions? Councilmember Huber?
The ease in which we can get in and out also suggests to me that it'd be easy for, for a hacker to get in and out also. And it's not only just here in the United States, but they've got foreign countries that's got some of those young people that can hack anything, even into the Pentagon. If they can hack into that, I don't know that I would feel secure with them hacking into Raymore. And of course, I don't know that we've got anything special that we want to hide, but that's not the point. The point is security and safety, and that really and truly concerns me. Because once we're on that road, we can't go back. And it, to me, I, I read about offshore banking and how easy it is to go from here to here.
Councilmember, what's your question?
Well, then I make that the same kind of an analogy with this here.
What, what's your question? We're in the question, we're not.
The, the question is, if it is secure to get in, it's easy to get in and out, is it also not easy to hack in and out?
No, it's, it's an excellent question. The, the, the API is the access that we're able to give through keys, and these keys are cryptographic keys that are, you know, longer than my arm. So that is information that we can say to Google, "I want to share my key with you, and I've proven that I am who I say I am. Let us exchange information." The point of security and how secure is it against attackers, foreign, domestic, young people, et cetera, intelligent people trying to get into your stuff. You've got Google and all of their security engineers working hard to thwart that every day. They run their $30 billion organization inside of this same environment. So they're, they're trying hard to make sure that that's secure as well. Whereas, the, the same would be true of your data here at the city of Raymore, where we're trying to keep it up to date by installing patches as they come out, as they discover problems with it. And that's why currently, IT department has to reboot the server every Tuesday to install patches and make sure that it's most up to date. So the resources of thousands of engineers who specify on security versus the resources of the city of Raymore to keep their data secure, that's kind of the difference. You're vulnerable by being on the internet.
Well, I was also thinking, Mr. Mayor, about hitting Target with.
Is this a question?
Yes, but I'm going through way of you. Thank you. I, I read about companies that have been hacked into and the, the credit card data is stolen. Would that be a problem here in Raymore then? The people that, especially they use our water bills, and they use their credit cards, would they have to be, have concern then?
No, that, that's different systems, and those are governed by PCI compliance, which is about using credit card data. This is independent of that. This is primarily your email systems.
Councilmember Wesco?
Which I would just like to point.
And it's a question, right?
Well, it, it's, it's more of a statement to answer the question.
No, no, no statements. We're, we're gonna, we're gonna do the questioning, and then we're gonna go supporting and not supporting and all that. Other questions? Thank you. I'll entertain a motion to dispose of, which one are we on here?
Twenty-nine forty-seven.
Twenty-nine forty, the first reading of Bill 2947.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve Bill 2947, the word of contract for cloud-based software.
Second.
A motion in the second. Is there any discussion? Mr. Wesco?
I was just going to point out that, you know, this, this is primarily for, for email and things of that nature, which our email is sunshineable. So, you know, it's, it's actually, you know, anybody can have access to it through the proper request. So if a hacker really wants that, I mean, instead of hacking in, they could just fill out the paperwork, and we'd have to supply it to them.
Councilmember Morehead?
Based on some earlier comments and observations, it's my understanding in 2012 that Google changed its terms and conditions to recognize a new standard regarding security protocol, and that it is at the front of those industry standards. They've changed the recognition of intellectual property rights to ensure that the customer maintains their intellectual property right, nor do they cede their right to us. Now granted, under Section 9, under both agreements, the customer name can be disclosed, but nothing more than that. And, and based on, I mean, granted, everything's encrypted. If, if we voluntarily cede our email account to, to the public and allow access, that's going to happen. I mean, there, there's no way to completely protect anything. But based on the review of both, of the terms and conditions, there are standards put in place on their end to properly secure our stuff. So, and, and I guess I probably should oppose this as an earlier question. Our current email system could easily have some ability to be hacked as well. So this is a better step. We're already vulnerable, and so this is just one better step forward. I'm also concerned, because when we talked about this, I think it was almost a year ago, we were, it, it was stated, and I guess this is more of a question, it was stated that micro, we, our current system is not, no longer going to be supported. So we need to make a change, because we can't stay as Luddites. We have to move forward, and our current system will expire. So it's all or nothing. We, we do something, or we just let it expire, so.
Councilmember Huber?
I guess my question is, do we have to make that, that kind of a jump, though, from was it the cyber something or other into the clouds? Is there something in between that we can do? And you all are shaking your head and saying, no, there's nothing. Well, I don't, I don't think that the people of Raymore know enough about this, that they're, I'd like to hear from my constituents a little bit more. So I'm going to wait to see what happens.
Another discussion? Okay, there's a motion in the second to approve the first reading of Bill 2740, 2947. All in favor? One, two, three, four, five, six, seven. In opposition? And abstaining? And the reason for your abstention?
Did you ask to Mr. Wesco his reason for abstention? I didn't hear it.
Yes, I did.
I don't know enough to make the decision.
Okay, thank you. Oops. And maybe we have the first reading of Bill 2948 by title only.
The first reading of Bill 2948 by title only. An ordinance of the city of Raymore, Missouri approving and authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract with Mzuzu LLC to provide technical services to install Google Apps for Business software on city systems, and provide training to all employees on the use of the software for an amount not to exceed $5,600, and authorizing the city manager to approve change orders within established budget constraints.
Thank you. Staff report?
Thanks, Mr. Tur. I'll call Mr. Fearborn.
Thank you, sir. Based on staff's recommendation and council previous vote to move to Google Apps, the need to have Google's technical expertise in making this transition, and Google's use of Mzuzu LLC as their certified regional provider for this area, staff recommends a word of contract to Mzuzu LLC to provide installation and training services to transition to Google Apps for a not-to-exceed cost of $5,600. Again, the cost of this service and the product that is subject to the previous bill is a total of $16,050 within the budget amount of $16,597.
Questions of staff? Councilmember Morehead?
For clarification's sake, should this say Google Apps for Government?
We will change that, sir.
Okay.
Thank you. Other questions? I'll entertain a motion to dispose of the first reading of Bill 2948.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve Bill 2948, the order of contract for Google App software installation.
Second.
There is a motion in the second to approve the first reading of Bill 2948. Is there any discussion? Councilmember Kellon?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I maybe should have asked this during questions. But if we approve this contract, is there going to be, is there a possibility of future expenses of upgrades for the software that we are using on this, primarily the email? This, this is going to cost us, this contract, $5,600. I, I have to assume that's more than above the, the software package that we use. We have to pay for that. Or, I, I guess, are there going to be any future associated costs that we need to be aware of?
Within this contract, no, sir. This is, this is for installation and training of the software. And once it's, once we have it in, then of course, IT will be trained up on it, and any Google upgrades that they may do would, we'd be able to handle those. This is just to transition us into the software.
And I would note, though, that there is also a subscription fee. There is a yearly subscription fee.
On, on the previous, not on this one.
Not, not on this one.
On the previous one, yes, sir.
But, but it's, it's not to say that there isn't ongoing costs associated with, with this project. But those costs are the subscription fee that was in the other bill. Other discussion? And there is a motion in the second to approve the first reading of Bill 2948. All in favor? One, two, three, four, five, six, seven. Opposed? One opposed. Okay. And that takes care of new business. We'll move on to public comments. Oh, it looks like our students have left. Darn. I had hoped that we'd have some public to make comments. If there's anybody who would like to make a comment, come forward, identify yourself for the record. Keep your comment under five minutes. Okay? Seeing no one, I'll open the floor to mayor council communication using my handy-dandy list of random council member names. This evening, we'll begin with Councilmember Stevens.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Congratulations, Jeannie, for your thing. Also, on a personal note, I think I'm lucky to be here today. I had a gas leak in my basement. Hadn't gone down there, my house might have been a smoking hole in the ground, I'd been dead. But the way it happened, I caught it, and the gas company came out and got it fixed.
Councilmember Wesco?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I too want to congratulate Jeannie for being elected to, as a president-elect. I also want to remind everybody that there's a candidate forum this Wednesday at 7:00. It's a good way to come out and, and find out what people stand for. There's, there's not too much opposition for council members, but there is one race that, that is opposed, so come out, get more information. But it is important, especially for school board, because there are six candidates. So definitely come out and learn more of what they stand for, and, you know, it helps you to know who to vote for. Also, I think this is the last meeting that we have before the election, other than a work session, so just want to remind everybody to go out and vote. There are several charter amendments on, on the ballot, so please go out and exercise your civic duty.
Thank you, Councilmember Morehead.
Ms. Warner, I, I have to say, when we went to the MML conference, I noticed a, a lot of people interacted with you, and I'm, obviously, you're very deeply involved, and I'm glad to see you being recognized as president-elect. I know this means a lot more work, and, but, well, well-deserved. The, I do have to say, in light of all the conversations we The, I do have to say, in light of all the conversations we've had over the last few months regarding the now titled Civic Center, I really was impressed with our meeting with the park board and it's moving forward very productively and I'm very supportive of that. I do have to say that Golden Corral was a big hit. I guess I should say, though, I have Minsky's waiting at home, so I don't just jump to the newest. I'm still eating pizza and I have to apologize to everybody because the one thing I will disclose from an executive session two weeks ago is I went into the meeting and I made a remark about no more snow and apparently with what came down today, it is now my fault. So I apologize for that.
Councilmember PFO?
Thank you. This will be my last meeting with the council, I believe, and so since it's the end of the term, as a professor, it's customary for me to give final grades and I'm gonna do that, but I would not be presumptuous enough to grade my fellow council members with two exceptions. And those two exceptions are folks who provide service to the council, that's our leadership team, our mayor and our mayor pro tem, and I would have to give you an A-plus and certainly magna cum laude for the job that you both do in providing leadership for the council. Indeed, you do an excellent job and not just the council, but the ribbon cuttings, the other functions that I see you at. I'm always very proud of our city and the way we're represented by our mayor and our mayor pro tem. The council certainly would not function without leadership. The city would not function without staff and that's one thing I've learned over many, many years of working in higher education, staff are the people who really implement all of the dreams and all the vision that people on the council have or people on any leadership team have. And our staff, Mr. Berlin, certainly A-plus, magna cum laude, does an excellent job and it's built a wonderful staff. There's only one thing I've noticed and that is your name had better begin with a J or a G. Sorry, Mike, but other than that, to the three gyms, to John, who I'm not sure, I've seen John here, to Jean, Jan, all the folks. Jeannie, major congratulations to Jeannie. I mean, that just shows how excellent this staff is and as one to be a citizen who was a citizen last July and to be a citizen again in a couple of weeks. I'm very, very proud to be a citizen of Raymore because of the way this city functions and the teamwork that I see between council and staff. And I just want to say, thank you for the opportunity to serve. It's been my pleasure and I wish the council well and the city staff well in the future.
Thank you. Councilmember Kellogg?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to congratulate Jeannie also. Very well done. And I'd like to have a, well, not have, but make a reminder, say a reminder of April 7th joint meeting with the park board and also the roundabout subcommittee will be making a presentation during that meeting after we meet with the park board for the conceptualization of the roundabout welcoming feature. So there are some people out there that are interested in it and I just wanted to give that reminder there. That's April 7th. The meeting will begin at 7:00 here in the council chambers and it will be visible through our public channel and the Internet. And also, Mr. Wesco spoke about the public or the candidate forum, that's also available for viewing also, so if they can't come out to City Hall, be sure to tune in for the public channel or even on the Internet through the website. Thank you.
Councilmember Hubach?
I'm addressing my comments to the people that are listening in. You all know that I don't know much about high technology, so I appreciate hearing from any of you as to how far you think the city of Raymore should go in our quest for technology. Thank you.
Councilmember Abdelgawad?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I will also echo the congratulations to Jeannie. We're proud of you. And also, get out and vote April 8th. I'm one of, well, I guess the only council member with an opponent, and so just a quick reminder to make sure you get out and vote on April 8th. And then last but not least, I just want to mention how much I've enjoyed being on the committee, working on the roundabout. It's been, it's been a great meeting of minds. We've had several meetings and shared a lot of ideas on how to incorporate art into our city, working on how to bring the community together, and so I'm really excited about having the opportunity to share our vision and our idea for the roundabout in a few weeks.
Thank you. Councilmember Boehner?
I too would like to give you my congratulations and also to wish Bob good luck as he exits the council. We've enjoyed your company here and I've enjoyed serving with you as a councilman for our board.
Thank you. I will echo everybody else's comment, but I already sent you an email congratulating you on your presidency, so I am a year in advance of everybody else. So the information we received this evening about the North Cass Plaza with a possible interest from hotel and retail, that's encouraging. I hope that comes to fruition. I am really looking forward to see what the Roundabout Welcoming Feature Committee has developed. Looking forward to the meeting on the 7th and hopefully it's something as wonderful as the rumors I've been hearing. Last Friday, the Raypek Public School Foundation held their first gala, which was very, very well-attended. This is to, the Raypek Public School Foundation hopes to generate funds to give scholarships to students and supplies to teachers and that sort of thing. If you're interested in the Raypek Public School Foundation, they're on the Raypek School website and you can find more information there. I'm not gonna say anything about the snow. I couldn't remember which was, who was the last person to mention snow. I appreciate you taking the credit for the snowfall that we received today. And Councilmember PFO, it's been a short stint. I thoroughly enjoyed having you on the council. I think you made a great contribution. If you ever get to the point where you're not traveling, run for office again and you know the ropes now, so. And that takes care of our meeting. I'll entertain a motion to go into executive session under 610.021, subparent three.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we move into executive session to discuss personnel matters as authorized by 610.021, subsection three.
Second.
A rule call vote, please.
Councilmember Abdelgawad?
Yes.
Councilmember Boehner?
Yes.
Councilmember Hubach?
Yes.
Councilmember Kellogg?
Yes.
Councilmember Morehead?
Yes.
Councilmember PFO?
Yes.
Councilmember Stevens?
Yes.
Councilmember Wesco?
Aye.
We'll go into executive session. We'll return only to adjourn the main meeting. Thank you, everybody.